Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wakefield zoning board of appeals hearing for Wednesday, June 10, 2020. I will start by taking attendance by roll call. For the record, so we know Chip Tarbell is on route. I hope you'll join us shortly. Jim McBane.
Here.
Amy Wall.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Tom Lucy.
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh.
Yeah.
McFeely. Thank you. So again, all should be present when Chip gets here. Okay, I will ask the board clerk Amy Wall to read the legal notice, please.
Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the great, to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in numbers, 1-929-205-6099, meeting ID 83340846184. Please use dial-in or computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. One, application for the Board of Appeals on its own motion to consider the possible revocation of the variances granted to Nilu at the meeting of April 8, 2020, and set forth in a discussion, in a decision, excuse me, that was filed with the town clerk on April 13, 2020. In cases 19-68, 19-69, and 19-70, the variances were from Article 6, Section 19031H of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to permit the construction of the dwelling within 50 feet of an embankment of an open stream under Article 6 and Table 2 of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to allow three stories in a single residential district and under Article 6 of Table 2 of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to reduce the front yard setback. The property is shown as map 26 lot parcels 58B-124 of the assessors map and is located at Cherry Lane, AKA Zero Greenwood Street. The reasons for the potential revocation is the possibility that the said variances were obtained on the basis of plans and information that may have been inaccurate, false, and/or fraudulent. Board of Appeals. You're muted, Dave.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
So just again, a few reminders, given the nature of this meeting. We'll try to keep all non-board members muted. Any public participation will be welcomed at the appropriate time. The board will discuss the matter at hand. I know the applicant, Mr. Lewis here, I believe his attorneys here. Picked up some background noise there. And we will certainly entertain their testimony as well. And then I don't know if there'll be other public participation required or or appropriate, but we will see how the discussion goes. If we do get to a point where there's a vote, the chair will entertain said motion, any discussion, and take a vote by roll call. If anyone does wish to speak, I would ask that you please raise your hand in Zoom. I will try to pay attention to those, note those, and call on people in order. And then when we're done, we will, with our business, we will again adjourn and take any votes by, by roll call. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm a, I'm on my phone, so I'm only, you can only see me as a telephone number. Because my computer isn't going into Zoom quite nicely. So I'm here. And in attendance.
Okay, is your number ending 3683?
That's me.
Okay. I can rename you in the room, just so folks see the participant list. They can see it's you by that number. Thank you, Chip. And welcome. We just basically got started. So you didn't miss much. Okay, so we are here, as Amy noted, in the public notice to discuss the application of Cherry Lane that we had a few hearings on, starting in June of 2019. There were several continuances. We met again March 11. And then had a hearing on, on April 8, at which time the board took a vote to approve variances for this property. And the decision was filed shortly thereafter. Since that time, there was additional correspondence with the applicant. The applicant went back to Concom. There was potential more changes to the plan being considered. And through the course of correspondence amongst the applicant, myself, Gail, our secretary, the building inspector, and ultimately town council, Mr. Mullen, became involved. It, it, there were questions raised about the, about the plans that were being submitted to us, even the updated plans after the fact of potential changes. And where these changes were coming from and who was making these changes. And so that brought to question sort of the subject of why we're here. I know the building inspector and the town council on separate occasions spoke to the original engineer who authored the plans or stamped the original plans that the applicant brought forth, I believe, to the Concom in early 2018 and as well as to this board last June. And there's been, again, additional correspondence from that engineer, Cliff Rober, who I believe is on the call as well. And it again brought to question the nature of those updates, who was making them, and whether those plans that were presented to us during the hearing and after were in fact stamped changes from that engineer or not. And we, we had reason believe they were not, that Mr. Lou was making them himself on plans that had been stamped previously by Mr. Rober. So I will pause there and ask Mr. Lou. Do you agree with everything I've just said?
Um. Most of it, but of all the details.
Okay, so were you making the, the updates of the plans that were presented to this board during the hearing and after, when additional changes were being contemplated?
So during, so in June of 2019, in the first hearing, I presented two stamped plans that were stamped by Cliff. One is with a 20-foot normal setback, and then one with a reduced setback. And those are hard copy stamps required by the process. And I brought them into the meeting. And then
And I have copies of those. Those are in the file that I have with me.
Yep, great. And and then I had to clean up the deed, a deed issue. And I got that accomplished. And, and then we resumed in March. So in March, conservation, I mean, sorry. My bad. ZBA wanted to see what the dimensions on the backside would look like if we reduce the front variance. And I forgot that I had submitted both plans stamped in June with you. And they asked if we can zoom in to see if, you know, just for better clarity. So since I was working with Cliff since 2018, collaboratively, he shared the file with me because I was the home designer and he was surveyor. He said that, you know, I never modified any of his lot lines or any of her surveying work. It's primarily what I did in March of this year was I took the electronic format that he has stamped back in 20, in 2019, in June, that I gave to you guys, and I just zoomed in on it. And then I just reprinted it. And, and then that's what I gave to you. So you have the stamped copy with the same dimensions that you reviewed and approved already in possession since 2019, in June. That Cliff had stamped.
Right, I have a copy that that I stamped on March 11, which was our first real hearing after June.
Do you have the ones back in June of 2019?
I do. I do. They are stamped, one stamped 122618, and one stamped 61919. And those are original ink-stamped plans signed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so do you have, for the six, for the 619, there should have been two versions, one with a 20-foot setback and one with the reduced setback.
Yes.
Yes. And if you compare that to the March of this year, they're the identical drawings in terms of factual information shown for the distances of the building to the back to the stream, they're identical, identical drawings. All I did was zoomed in and reprinted it, just to make it easier for you guys to review it.
Okay, yeah, the one I stamped March 11 has a date on it of March 9, which must have been the date of the changes you made.
There's no changes.
With
There's no changes.
Well, it has Mr. Rober's stamp from 122618.
Because he did the original survey. It's, and, and, and you have the, the original hard copy stamp from, from Cliff back in June of 19 of 2019.
Right, so.
So it's the same drawing. I just zoomed in and reprinted it.
Okay. I know there were several other versions of plans that were sent via email. We have copies here in the file. I think we saw some of them during the hearing on March 11, and then on the 8. The one on the 8 we approved had the file's quite thick. I didn't have it open in front of me. I think I have a copy of it, a PDF.
Yeah, I added the zoning regulations as requested by the building inspector and and some notations and, but in terms of the dimensions that were represented, those are the same dimensions stamped by Cliff back in June of 19 of 2019.
Right, now this one, let me see if I can share this one without. Can I share? Just that plan. Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Yeah. Can you see my screen in the meeting?
Again, yep, yep.
So this, I believe, to be the one that was, it's, it's titled Final Site Plan with Approved Variants. And I believe it was the one that accompanied the decision. We reviewed it on that April 8 meeting.
Fair enough.
Has the zoning table. It has the 15-foot designation, although we, we've since questioned whether that 15 really should have been 10. But
Exactly.
But it has a date of 313, and it actually has Mr. Rober's signature and a date of 313. So
Yeah. Once again, all the surveying work is Cliff Rober. I, I am not claiming to do any surveying work. All I did was I zoomed in, put in the, the table of regulations and, and some notations, and, and that's it. All the numbers, if you go back to the hard copy stamps given to you at the first hearing, all the numbers line up.
Okay. So Mr. Robery, I'm gonna ask you to chime in here, because I, I, I just want to confirm, did you produce the plan that I'm showing you on the screen?
I did not produce this plan. I had worked for Mr. Lou and did some signing of plans back in 2019. He engaged me to do additional work, but this was not my production of a plan. That is not my stamp on this plan, and that is not my date on this plan. This is, I, I saw this plan for the first time when it was sent to me by the, the town engineer a few weeks ago. This does not have my approval, and I request that this plan be taken out of the record since it was not produced by me.
So how do we think your name and date got on this plan then? Right, that's
My guess is that the, someone has used a scan and scanned in my name and written a date in.
So Mr. Lou, if Mr. Robert didn't produce this plan, can you where this name and date came from?
From me. Yep, I did it. And once again, I stand by the fact that Cliff did all the surveying work. And everything that, in terms of the numbers, he approved back in June of 2019. I was preparing for the variance process, and you have a hard copy of that. So other than the, the table regulations and, and the notations, all the numbers around the building, all the setback calculations and the back to the stream, all that aligned with the hard copy stamps that Cliff reviewed and stamped back in June of 2019.
Mr. Lou, could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Chip, go ahead.
Did you sign Cliff's name?
No, that is Cliff's signature.
How did it get on this plan?
It's scanned.
Okay, so to, to use my old school, it's forged.
I don't know if it's considered forged, but it's Cliff's.
Yeah. He didn't sign it. It was presented to us as he signed it. It was presented to us as he did all the work. We just heard he didn't, and he doesn't approve of the plan. You can go on and on all you want about all the dimensions. As far as I'm concerned, in 17 years that we've been here, I've never seen anything like this happen.
Yeah.
Just telling you.
Yep, no, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not arguing with you. And, you know, I, I, yes, I, I should have gone back maybe to Cliff and, and just, hey, give your heads up, you know. I, I zoomed in and I reprinted it, and you know.
But I seem to recall during, again, perhaps they were interim plans. I know what we have in the file is, is these are the few that were stamped by me during the actual hearings. I think there were some interim plans, plans that may have been presented to the Concom in a couple of meetings, one that happened in March, one in April. They were colored. They were different, as you said, maybe zoomed in copies. But I seem to recall some of these dimensions were changing. The, the, I don't know if it was the driveway, the dimensions back to the stream. I remember that there were some differences going on here that were not
There, there was, yeah, I did. There was some thought that I thought, you know, would it be possible for me to move the building envelope further away from lot 128, just to give it some more breathing room? But we never followed through with any of that. What conservation reviewed was this one. And approved this one. And again, the numbers are, that are shown here are the ones that I provided to you, hard copy stamped back in 2019.
Dave.
Yes, Jim.
We did on the set just before this one, where in fact he presented the 20 square, the 20-foot at the front yard. We agreed to a 15-foot. The calculations at that time for the cor, the rear corner were 34.2 feet. This is where I don't think a novice should be putting what the number is right now, which is 43.5 at that corner. It's a little bit of trig there to get that corner. And that's where the surveyor should be involved, basically, in setting what the actual distance comes out to be based on the original survey, not on based on someone just stabbing a number at that after they changed the 15 feet on the front. So we moved the building by five feet forward, and we've lengthened the distance at the rear. But who calculated that distance at the rear, and who moved the building on the sheet?
That was me.
So, so this drawing, this drawing represents, by what's implied, it's, by a surveyor had done all this work when in fact it didn't. And this is on record publicly and filed publicly at this point. And so, you know, it's, it's not exactly true.
Dave, can I ask a question?
Yes, Amy.
Cliff, I have a question for you. The date that's on there, that's handwritten in there, is that, is that your handwriting as well, or is that something that was added after the fact?
That is not my handwriting. It was added by somebody else after the fact.
Thank you.
So same with that typed date there? Everything on here is, is after the fact, clearly.
I, I have not been able to review all of the numbers, but this is certainly not a product of, of my office. And this is certainly not something that I have stamped and sealed.
Understood. Thank you.
I, David, I, I, sorry, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I was working actively with Mr. Rober up into the day before someone from the town hall called him. And he was helping me to review this drawing for sign-off by Mr. Rober. So we were still collaborating up into that last minute. So he saw this.
Didn't sign off on it.
He didn't sign off on it. I was working with him to clean it up, to get it into the right scale. And he gave me feedback on what he wanted to sign off on. So we had a collaborative working relationship. And someone called him from the town. And I feel bad that that happened. And, you know, it was never my intention to, to cause him embarrassment. Because I, I respect him. We had a working relationship.
Mr. Chairman?
One second. I see Mr. Mullen has his hand raised. You're too drunk, but I'll come back to you. So go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a question for Mr. Rober. Mr. Rober, you and I spoke on May 12. And I have it in my notes that you told me that you could not vouch for any of the zoning information on the plans, that the plans had an odd scale and that there may be other problems with them. Could you itemize for us what, if any, problems you do have with this plan?
Certainly. So let me go back. I did have a relationship with Mr. Lou. Upon finding out about him using illegally my stamp and seal, I severed my relationship immediately. Some of the things I see on the plan that were not kosher in my regard, respect, are the, the scale of the plan is an odd scale for a surveyor to use. I, I can't see the scale on this, but generally it would be in the one foot equals 10-foot range, and it's, it's a strange scale. I can't see what it is on this. Also, the offsets that are used are not perpendicular to the the item that it's supposed to be giving a shortest distance to. So the distances to the intermittent stream are, are at an angle, not 90 degrees. They don't make any sense. There, there were a number of other things that I had been talking to Mr. Lou that I, I was foreseeing and I was having to check out, including, I believe, the rock trenches underneath the deck were moved. The, the distance is actually from the building to the pavement, which, again, the zoning would indicate that that should be to the street line, not the pavement. I, I have not been able to look at and determine the, the, the zoning list at this point either.
The zoning table, you mean?
The zoning table, correct.
Yeah. So when you say the, the offsets, you mean, like, these arrows normally would be perpendicular versus angled?
Let's take, on the bottom, you see 15.0 from wetland flag 2 out to the intermittent stream. It, it's not a 90-degree going to the stream, so that would not be a valid distance because it's at the wrong angle. Same thing coming off of wetland flag 3. It's, it's not going perpendicular to the stream, so it, it's a wrong distance. I, I, again, I have not been able to scale and anything on this, so I don't actually know if the building itself scales to what the distances written are actually.
So if I may, another question, Mr. Rober. With respect to the 15 feet shown from the proposed building to the existing pavement, is that a distance that you can vouch for or not?
From my conversations prior, that was something Mr. Lou was trying to hold is 15 feet off the pavement to the house, although that's not a zoning distance. But there was conversations that I had in 2019 dealing with that.
Do you know what the distance is between this proposed building and the actual edge of the layout or the, the lot line?
I, I do not know what it is off the top. I, I believe it's somewhere in the vicinity of nine or 10 feet. But I do not know what it is.
Yeah, the original plan that I have stamped from you last June, Mr. Rober. It says 15, but it's measured to the street.
Right, it matches that.
Well, there's also a drawing, Dave, a P1, which is 3-9 2020, which was the one that was presented to us, I believe, when we discussed the 15 feet from 20. And at that time, the 20-foot to the building edge goes to the property line, basically, and we were changing it. We agreed to change, to allow 15 feet to the property line. And this drawing shows up, it's going 15 feet to the roadway line, and it can't, not by zoning. It's got to go to the property line. So what we saw originally on this drawing of 39 2020 was correct in that it showed the dimension, or we crested a dimension of 20 feet to the property line. And we changed, we allowed the change to 15. Now, on this drawing, it shows it going to the pavement. So there's, there's something screwy there, too.
Right, even if, even if that was one of the questions that came up after the filing, was whether the variance on the front setback granted was actually the right variance. And there was the conversation amongst the various parties that Mr. Lou may have to refile for that variance, because that's not a a de minimis minor modification kind of change. It would not meet that criteria, right? So even if all these other factors weren't in play, it was likely going to have to be refiling to correct that front variance setback. And that might still come into play depending on how this, how this plays out here. That might still have to happen, but anyway.
Mr. Chairman, it's Greg. If I, just a quick observation, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but even if everything on this plan is correct, we've heard from a licensed professional that it was not properly stamped and it is not his stamp and seal. So even if everything turned out to be correct, you know, it's, it's, it's not a legal document and that we made our decision on. So I don't, I mean, understanding the discussion about all the distances, but either way, it almost doesn't matter.
I did it.
One, one second. One second, if I may. Mike, Michael, you had a question, too, and we let Tom jump in there. Do you still have a question?
I, I think Greg just summed it up. That was my question.
Sorry, you had a similar comment. Okay. Okay.
Sorry, Mike.
Mr. Lou?
Yes. Yeah, so I, I would just go back to the application and, you know, in my application, I asked for a ten foot setback from a lot line. And also in, in the zoning regulations, I asked for a ten foot setback requested. I shown in there. So even though, and then under proposed dimensions, it's fifteen, including buffer. So usually the buffer from the lot line to the, that, you know, is set usually reserved for, I guess sidewalks is five feet. So whatever, I mean, I asked for ten feet in two places. And once again, I, I refer you back to the hard copy stamped that I gave to the zoning board on the first hearing. And that was reviewed where I worked with Mr. Robert and we reviewed it and he stamped it. And that's what I presented to the board on the first hearing. So you do have hard copy stamped drawings at the first hearing.
Right, your original application, I will attest, I'm looking at your application, did request a reduction to ten feet. Resulting setback to the pave row would be fifteen. So different numbers are there, but did you, you did ask for a reduction in the application. Unfortunately, none of the plans actually reflected that. It continued to show the fifteen to the street. It should have ultimately reflected the ten to be accurate, but that aside, that's not what was granted. So again, that would have to be perhaps contemplated separately to correct that because I don't think we can do that, you know, in a, in a, in a modification kind of way. But it, we're still coming back to the plans. You're saying nothing substantially changed. You just zoomed in and added some tables. I, I mean, I've got copies of plans that show a bunch of different changes, including starting to move the building back and forth. Now, ultimately, we didn't vote and approve that, but there were variations of this plan that you were editing yourself and contemplating doing different things on the site and ultimately reusing what Mr. Robert had stamped at a much earlier date, including this final plan we approved. And again, it was represented that Mr. Robert had stamped this plan and he said he did not. That's, that's the troubling part for this board. It's, it's something, as Mr. Tarbell said, we have not seen before. Any other comments, questions from other board members?
I mean, I'm kind of on board, like with what Greg and, and Mickey was saying is that, I mean, to me, this is null and void. This is not, it's not a legal document at this point. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what to say. It's just, and I, I feel bad for the surveyor. I mean, is this something, you know, he could have lost his license over? I mean, you know, this is, it's a serious, serious thing. And, you know, even if it's something that if he didn't change any numbers or didn't do anything like that, if, if all he did was put the stamp on there, it's still, I'm having a really high time with that, that that's somebody's livelihood that's been taken abuse of. And I don't, I'm having a hard time with, with this altogether because I don't feel right about that that is something that he could have done to this man.
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say I concur with Amy, Mike, Greg. Regardless of what his intent was, I don't see other than to vote to rescind, but that's where I'm at.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Mickey, did you have something else? I'm, I'm seeing who's chiming in there.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Joe. Yeah, very good. My other question is what? We had a email today from Gil, another stamped drawing. Is that something that you were trying to submit also now? Does those have different numbers on it also?
Yep. So what I did was I wanted to get verification of dimensions. And so I hired Brian Parmenter from PFS Land Surveying. And he went out there and surveyed the land and actually took measurements from the state building envelope and measured to the stream and together an affidavit.
Because some, some of those numbers don't add up, like the corner of the building, instead of forty-three point five, the new drawing today shows forty point something.
Yep.
Forty, that forty-eight point six changed. So now that, that drawing doesn't even match up with this drawing.
So I had asked, um, you know, Mr. Parmenter, if he could join. And I, I don't know if he caught, dialed in, but, um, but during the, I mean, in his affidavit, he, he accounted for the discrepancies based on, you know, I mean, uh, Eric, you want to read the affidavit on behalf of Mr. Parmenter?
I'm just gonna do a
Yeah, he's inputting.
Am I sharing the plan or did I only share the? Can you see?
If, if you want to stop sharing and then Eric can pull up the affidavit.
Unless you have it, David, I don't know if you have the, the affidavit that was emailed earlier today.
Yeah, I do.
But, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, this plan has nothing to do with this discussion.
Nor does the affidavit. It's not part of
Nor does the affidavit. We're, we're discussing the set of plans that were presented to us stamped, not stamped by a surveyor and that we approved. To me, this whole discourse today means nothing.
Chip, I agree with you. That's, I'm just throwing it out there because I think this is something that if he wants to go forward, I think he's gonna have to start over and, and resubmit the new plan. I mean, right, by, by right.
Well, I'd like to, uh, Mr. Chairman, is this an appropriate time to hear from Mr. Mullen on options and what happens moving forward?
Sure, I, I would agree with that, Tom. I don't know if you had your hand raised again or I forgot to put it down before, but, but if, if you could just enlighten the board and just summarize kind of different options and what the implications of those are, that would be great.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I did have my hand up briefly, but then Joe Pride stole my thunder. I was going to ask about this, uh, plan, which I actually do see some relevance in because the numbers are different than the plan that you based your approval on. And, and so that's a separate problem. Not only did you base your approval on a plan that was not actually stamped by Mr. Robert, now the applicant comes with a new plan that suggests that the numbers on the approved plan were inaccurate. When I was last talking with you, you raised a couple of questions, the board did. And one was, what would be the effect, the perclusive effect of your boards voting to rescind your prior approval? That is, would there be a two-year bar? And I believe that, well, first of all, there's zero case law out there about this because in my experience, this just doesn't happen. But I believe that a rescission of the previous approval would constitute the kind of negative action that would invoke the two-year bar under chapter forty A, section sixteen. That wouldn't necessarily be fatal to Mr. Lou's coming back to you in, within the two years. What he would have to do would be, one, to have a properly stamped plan and thereby create new conditions that would warrant reconsideration. And two, he'd have to get approval from the planning board to return to your board with not more than one dissenting vote. I was also asked whether your board could rescind without prejudice, by which I think was meant, without invoking the two-year bar. And the answer to that is no. There was a 2014 Land Court case that said that the board has no authority to waive the two-year bar.
Like a withdrawal without prejudice, they could come back. That would not be applicable here. And, and rescension is, or recension is, is equivalent in that case to a denial of a variance, in which case that two-year gets invoked as well.
Right.
If we denied the variance outright, then they couldn't go back for two years. So this is sort of an equivalent to that, even though you said there's no precedent for it. But you do believe it, it, would it follow that thing?
Yes.
Okay.
But David, I, I do think it's important to understand that there is a, another avenue, which that he can go to the planning board and ask for forgiveness and get back in front of us.
Right.
Yeah, and again, we haven't been down this path, so I, I didn't even know that path existed to go back through the planning board to come back here. That's, that's interesting. And, okay. I'm just looking at my notes. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. I'm seeing where the hands raised. Yeah, I, I mean, the only testimony we've heard this evening is, is pretty much verbal testimony. There are no plant, no new plans. Again, this, this was an existing approved hearing or application. I do see a few other members of the public. I don't know what we could possibly entertain. I know Ms. Palmer's raising her hand. She's the direct the butter. So Ms. Palmer, I will, I will call on you. I just, again, ask that we keep testimony or your questions pertinent to what we're hearing this evening and the information that's been shared this evening. Please go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My question is clarification on approval from your board and the Conservation Commission for the the paper road to be cleared and gravel to be laid out there. I was not aware of that being approved in the hearings that I attended. I just wanted to know if I had missed a step along the way as, as part of this because I did, did not hear that that was approved. Thank you.
The, the plan to do the work on the road, I think, was in a memorandum that we received as part of the file from the applicant. Just checking the decision, I believe it was referenced in the decision. A utilities installation plan. So I believe it was presented at our, at our hearing at which time we voted. It may not have been shared on the screen, but it was part of our file. And it was something the board members, you know, again, used in their decision at that time because we had asked for that information. I don't know that it was also presented at the CONCOM, but I know we got a copy of that and it was referenced in our decision. Okay. Anyone else?
Can I make a statement, David?
Yes, you may.
You know, I I there was no ill intent on what I did. And when I found out, you know, that that Cliff was, you know, contacted by the town, I apologized profusely to him because I never intended him, for him to be embarrassed in this way. And, you know, I respect him as a surveyor and as a partner in this project with me. And I, you know, I appreciated his trust in me to share that file with me back in October. And that, you know, he knew that I would not modify any of this surveying work and and, you know, I I don't know what else to say. I mean, you know, I, I did not take his stamp anyplace else to, to try to claim anything, any, any other surveying work for any other purpose or anything like that. It, you know, it and, and once again, I, I just fought back on the fact that I gave to you hard copy stamped versions back in the first meeting. And what you voted on are the dimensions that were reviewed and stamped by Cliff Robert. So I, I don't know what else to say about that. And, and I, I don't disagree with the fact that the physical ones that you saw were zoomed in because you requested for that. And, and I gave you what you requested. But there was just never any intent to misrepresent anything that Cliff did because he did the full surveying work. And we worked together. And he allowed me as the home designer to place the building envelope where it was approved by conservation. And that's all I did. And, you know, there was never any intent to misrepresent anything that he did. And, and I apologized to him profusely on that. And that's all I gotta say.
Just for clarity, when, because I'm not sure I heard this earlier, when exactly did you stop working with Mr. Robert?
I was driving to him with the final versions that we had gone back and forth with over the phone and emails. I sent him the versions for him to look at and he gave me some feedback that, oh, you know, make sure the scale is one to twenty or, you know. I was literally driving to him. And then he called me and said, you know, I got a call from town and he's very mad. And he said, I don't want any part of this project.
It was before, but it was before the hearing in which we voted?
No, it was the day before. So it was the day it was May 12th. There was a hearing on May 13th that I had asked to be included on. Where it was going to be discussed under other whatever. And May 12th, I was actively working with, with Cliff to clean up the drawings and to the point where he would feel comfortable signing off on them. But I had totally forgotten that I had given you guys back in June of 2019, the same drawing, just without the, the zoning table and the notations. The same drawing that he had already signed off on. And you have it in your possession. So in essence, we were gonna do double work. But the new version would have the twenty, the zoning table. So that, that's, you know, and, and the extra notation, that's it. Surveying all the numbers, all the dimensions that you guys agree to, that Conservation agreed to, they're all, you have in your possession since June 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a clarification confirmation type of question. Kind of for the record here, I guess. Kind of for the record here, I guess. So you're saying we have a stamped, correctly stamped file, twenty nineteen. On the other hand, our decision, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe, maybe, Mr. Chairman, you might be the one to do this. Our decision was based on the plans that are dated three thirteen twenty twenty that are not correctly stamped, no matter what's in our possession. The decision had is based on the three thirteen twenty twenty incorrectly stamped plans.
No, I don't think I don't think we ever saw the three eleven. We saw three nine, we saw the three nine set. That should be the one that Steve, that Dave has a stamp on it and it originally showed twenty feet. And it's now, it was changed to fifteen and then the next set comes out. Let me point out that the building department was where this ball started recently, basically, when they started to look at what was before them. They started asking questions, basically, and this was well after the hearings. It was Jack, basically, who looked at this and said, this is crazy and started asking questions and calling people at that point. So I don't know who's driving what car when, but, you know, that's that was what Jack was responding to was what was filed with him.
So I mean, well, I guess that Jim, now that adds more mud to the water here.
Those are a lot of mud.
Well, we're hearing, all right, now I'm very confused because we were hearing that the three thirteen date are the incorrect plans. But you're saying we made it, our decision is based, the vote we took was on the three nine plans, but we haven't heard any testimony about three nine plans.
I think, Dave, do you have a copy of three nine there?
Oh, I don't, I I want to know. I don't care what we have copies of.
No, but that's what we, that's what we approved.
Is that correct?
With a commentary that it had to be changed to fifteen feet setback.
Variance decision references plans stamped by Robert Survey dated twelve twenty six eighteen and revised through March thirteen twenty twenty.
So it is through three thirteen, okay.
That was the one, that was the latest that we stamped at our hearing on April eighth. That was the latest. And I am looking and comparing it to the one from June of two thousand nineteen showing the fifteen foot and the other dimensions back to the stream. And the numbers are, they're not a hundred percent the same, but they're very similar.
Either way, it was the, we are through the three thirteen plans in the decision.
Correct.
Okay.
Which was the one I was showing earlier.
Yep. With the with, I don't even know what you'd call it, the non-existent stamp.
Correct.
Okay.
But regardless of they're the same or not, if if even if they're identical copies, that's not what was presented to us. Why not just take the one that was already already stamped and dated and whatever and just has an older date on it? Why are we why are we taking things that are the same if they are the same and stamping it fraudulently?
Couldn't tell you why I did it, to be honest with you, because you asked for it and then I did it. I I and I totally forgot that I had given to David reduced that back. I totally forgot and everyone else forgot too. So.
Right. So while the numbers are very similar, there were other changes made to the plan, notations added, a zoning table added.
Sure.
Scale was removed. So yes, it was zoomed to some degree, but the scale wasn't shown. So again, there just there were problems as Mr. Over attested to earlier, there are problems with the plan, even if 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 the arrows have very similar in some cases, identical numbers to what was presented back in June of two thousand nineteen. Even if they're almost the same, there's other changes to this plan and there's some irregularities that Mr. Rover attested to that are not hundred percent certified. They were not certified by him and yet his name appears on the plan. And I think that's the correct for the issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, any other last call for any comments? I think we've heard from all board members. Okay, I'm seeing nodding heads. Okay, Jim.
I move that we rescind the previous decision that the board made regarding this application.
Second.
Any discussion?
You wanna add the date of the meeting, just for the record?
Yeah, so the hearing was April eighth, the that's when the vote was taken and I just I got sort of some notes here. And it was filed on the thirteenth and Gail, I don't know if you have your notes handy, but that's what I got, the vote was filed, voted on on April eighth, filed on the thirteenth. So that is the decision we're referring to.
Correct.
Okay.
David? Is this for all three or just?
Yes, all three would be returned by this. Any other discussion from board members? All right, let me see, I want to double check. So voting members were all actually regular voting members, Dave, Chip, Jim, Amy and Joe. So we will take a roll call though.
So hold on, sorry, before you go, didn't Joe miss two? Did we already discuss that or is this different?
I signed an affidavit today on all of the minutes.
Right, so he missed the last hearing, which in which case we motioned to have tonight's hearing. So maybe I can ask Mr. Mullen. So Mr. Pride missed missed the March meeting. He signed an affidavit, caught up on the on the hearing details. But then he was absent for the last hearing in May, at which time we there was no new testimony except the discussion we had and then we made this motion to have this hearing tonight. Do you think that invalidates him from voting in this case tonight?
I don't think so. I would see tonight's hearing as a distinct matter from the hearing on Mr. Lou's application. Mr. Lou filed an application, you gave him a hearing, you voted in favor and you issued a decision in favor. Then information came about that caused your board on its own motion, in effect, to file a new application. And that was for rescission.
Okay.
So you had the hearing tonight on rescission. Everybody who participated, I think, can vote. And it's going to have to result in a written decision that will look like any other decision you do, but it's going to rescind the prior one. And that's going to have to be filed with the town clerk. And I think it should be recorded in the registry of deeds after the twenty days, just to lay to rest any misleading inferences that might arise from the prior approval.
Right. Okay, I was just looking for consistent voting, but I I do understand and I I would agree, a separate and distinct vote. But we will go with our regular voting members, which again, myself, Chip, Jim, Amy and Joe. So votes, Chip.
Yay.
Amy. Jim.
Hey.
Joe.
Yeah.
And I am a yay, so that is unanimous. So so we will, I will draft, Tom, I'll probably, if you don't mind, run the draft by you just because I I haven't written a decision of this nature before, so just so that we get get all the points referenced properly, we'll get it filed. And then, again, as you alluded to earlier, there are avenues for Mr. Lou to come back through the planning board and and make his case there. And I'm not sure what's required there, but perhaps he, something he can investigate and pursue if he so desires. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for joining, Tom. Thank you, everyone. We do have some other matters, but that that will close this particular hearing. And now move on to the other matters in the agenda.
Dave, Cliff's raising his hand.
I I I want to thank the board for supporting me as a surveyor and my stamp being used against my knowledge. I want to really thank the board for their their time, their thoughtfulness and their vote. Thank you.
Welcome. I'm sorry, this came to pass, Mr. Robert, sorry, but appreciate appreciate your comments.
Okay. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, so I just had a couple of the matters and and other folks may may have things as well. So first and foremost, we've received correspondence in the last week regarding five ninety Main Street, the new Shell Station that we granted us some permits and and relief for that complaint. I do have a copy of that letter. It was from a butter. Tried to have all my documents open here. When I close that one. Five ninety main, okay. So it is from too many windows open. Here we Okay. I don't know.
Are you just trying to find the person's name? It was a noise complaint that the vacuums are making.
Yeah, yeah, I just
But that's not, that's not five ninety, that's two ninety, isn't it?
No, no.
No, five ninety, the other one's nine fifty.
Oh, okay.
Right, the mobile's nine fifty, yeah. I just don't know. I think there's a problem with Microsoft Word here. Anyway, it was from a butter. And it was actually calling out noise. I assume all board members got a copy, but just just to state for the record. Again, there was a question about this during the hearings, as folks will recall, there was a noise study done. And we thought that that study would indicated that there wouldn't be a major change in noise to the butters. But since it's opened, actually, the noise in in the letter speaks to multi things. It's not just the vacuums which are had been removed to that side of the building. There's also an aspect to the individual vacuums, but also some main pump. And apparently, perhaps even the loudest appears to be the car wash, the drying mechanism of the car wash. So I've reached out to, well, when we received the complaint, Gail, you can perhaps speak to this. I didn't know contact with Mr. McGrail. We've already been in contact with the owner of the property and who's already taking steps to mitigate. And we've asked them to come back to our next hearing with a summary of kind of the steps they've taken and some more details about what they've done. So Gail, would you like to add anything else?
Well, just that the sound engineer did go back there. They are getting some sort of sound barrier thing. They've talked to the neighbor. They did send me a new complaint today. I did update them on what was going on. They did send me a new complaint today that it's just still unbearable. I told them it was going to take a couple of weeks for them to get the equipment in. But it is being worked on and and the owner is, according to my attorney McGrail, you know, very forthcoming in in trying to fix this. He's gone to the neighbors, talked to them. So, yeah, and he wanted me to, you know, let you guys know that.
That the, if it's the butter, basically, right directly, there's, they're on a second floor balcony, basically, looking over this whole thing. So any noise is going directly through to them, period.
Couple of times and it's it's pretty loud. After I read the letter, I thought, you know, maybe some people are just complaining. So I said, let me go drive by it. And every time I drive by it, from the street, it's really loud.
Supposedly, they did reduce it by fifty percent already, but they are still getting some kind of mechanism to, you know, put a barrier up around it too.
Yeah, they can put a sound fence up around those pumps for the vacuums and different things, so.
Is that going to obstruct the, I mean, not that the the neighbors have a great view, but is that going to be, is it, I don't know what it is. Is it a fence? Is it?
It's a fence with padding.
Okay, so is that gonna?
No, it's gonna look nice, nicer than looking at the pumps.
Okay.
So it's interesting they're working it. We don't have all the details of the mitigation steps, but he would, he would get an update, details and maybe even the applicant, the the owner, to come back to our next hearing and just summarize for us what's been done.
Dave, why do we, why do we need to have him come back?
No, he said
Isn't our issue?
No, maybe Brian would just dial in and and just report. We, I asked him, we'd like to know what's being done, just a summary. Because I'd like to know what mitigation steps he did.
But why do we need to waste our time during a meeting regarding it?
It it could be our issue, though, if he, they, if it's outside of the realm of what they presented, it would be.
Why we have a zoning enforcement officer?
Not for long.
There was another question about whether the decision contemplated doing a noise study after the fact that that has been done before in our decisions. Probably more likely with with equipment on roofs and that kind of thing. But there wasn't one in this, in this case. We didn't ask for, you know, do one after and see how, if it's what you're telling us it's going to be or if something changed, in which case so, but we didn't do anything in this case. So I would just like to know. It doesn't have to be a a notice, big, long thing. I just, if it's a memo, that might be okay, too. I just, I would like to know what steps they're taking to address the complaint. That's all. So so we'll see what we get back. Let's see, another one we talked about last time was the Main Street Lawton's property and the and the salon that was opening up there. Again, that all sort of, I think we brought it up in a March hearing. And then the pandemic hit and everything sort of shut down, including that business. They, I don't think they ever opened at that time. But there was a question about the signage and the phone numbers and sign permit. So I've driven by, I assume others have too. There's no more numbers on the windows. Gail, the sign permit is all set?
They did. They, yes, they have their permit.
Okay, so we can sort of tie that one off as well, just to close that that was something that I think hung out there after our last hearing and and now that the business is up and running, we just wanted to make sure they did what we asked, we directed them to do. Okay, I mean, my only other item, and then I'll I'll turn it over to anyone else who has items. If you remember, we voted on thirteen Elm Crest about the change in their pool from an in-ground sort of kidney shaped to more of a just a smaller round above ground. I went back to the original file because we had to write a a letter to the building inspector on our vote that it was a minor modification. The original decision we had and the plans that we had included a pool plan and some decision, the details on the wall, as you recall, but we did have a plan for the pool. I don't know if we actually felt the need to get a new plan or it was just going to be a standard above ground pool and it really didn't, it wasn't sort of vital that we had an updated plan. So I just want to put out there, does anyone on the board feel that we should have an updated plan for the pool that they now plan to do that would accompany the modification we made?
No. No.
For a permit, you don't need a plan of the pool. Yeah.
Okay, I just again, wanted to see if anyone else felt that that would be prudent, because if anyone went to the file, they'd see a pool plan, they'd see our modification and updated plan, but they wouldn't see an update to what the pool was going to be. But again, it it was simpler, it was above ground, it was round. I don't think there was a lot to it. So I'm okay. I just wanted to bring it out in case anyone else had a question or concern about that. That's all I had. Does anyone else, is there a clerk's report or any other matters before the board? And I knew we have to do minutes as well.
I might mention, I drove by twenty seven Water, thirty seven Water. I don't see much going on down there, particularly in relation to the rear of the site.
No. We haven't had received any affidavits or anything from the architect either.
Good luck there.
Yeah. I think there has been a call made to them. I just, I'm not privy. I I don't know what the outcome was.
They have a huge amount of site work to do because they they threw asphalt in and they haven't put, you know, planters in, they haven't got curbing in. I mean, there's a bunch of things that they they haven't done.
They don't have an occupancy permit? They're not?
No.
They're not open? Okay.
No.
I wouldn't think so with that much. I wouldn't think so with that much outstanding, but I was just curious, okay.
There is, there is one question, Chip and I have been rolling around, basically, has to do with 989 North Avenue. And this may go back to people's memories, basically, about sidewalks, but when that gets done. We believe that sidewalks are supposed to go across 600 and across 980, basically. Fact, like, this granite curbing is supposed to go at least in front of 980. So, you know, there's, there's stuff that has to be done there eventually, but it's too early at this point, because they're not asking for anything from any of us.
980, I'm trying to see the. 598.
Yeah.
So in front of the new one, extending from the existing one to the new one.
I, I remember discussions about a town sidewalk in front of 600, and, and we're trying to figure out whether that became part of the decision, or didn't become part of this decision. And the opinions are really vague as to who's doing it, whether the, there's a sidewalk on the plans. Jim seems to remember that the town was going to do it, I seem to remember the owners are supposed to do it.
In, in the meeting, what'd you say, Amy?
I thought the owners were gonna do it.
Well, there's a, there's a note in the meeting minutes, the next little last meeting minutes, that indicates that Stinson produced a letter, basically, asking for a sidewalk and curbing. In front of the new project, but drawing, if you look at the drawings for the new project, it also shows sidewalk in front of 600 is part of those drawings. So you've got to assume the sidewalk going in front of both buildings at this point, but only one is showing at this point having granite curbing.
I wonder if they're waiting until they're both done, and then they're just going to do one continuous strip.
I'm sure it's, I'm sure that, that's the intent, basically, with to do it all at once, yes.
I just called up the decision for 598, there's no condition, or it just says by the plan, so it's whatever the plans show, if they show curbs in front of both.
They show curbs in front of one. But they show, they show sidewalks in front of both.
I mean, they can't have curves in one and not in the other.
Well, unless there's something, we'd have to go back and look at the 600 decision and 600 drawings and see what they show. Because they should have been doing something back then.
Right.
But did we give them relief to hold off for a whole year, or did the, or did engineering give them a relief to hold off and do it all at once?
Yeah, I seem to, I feel like I remember, this was over two years ago now, because I think it was like right when I first got on the board, I think we did. I don't know if we officially gave them relief, but I believe they came in and talked about it, and we kind of unofficially said, obviously, you're not going to put in. One without the other, so make them, you know, make them both together, I don't think anything from my, this is just from my recollection, anything was official.
Well, if, if we discussed it, then it would be in meeting minutes somewhere along the way.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a while ago, because I want to say it was like within my first handful of meetings.
Anyway, it's up to watch for, as what, as this comes to, as it comes to an end.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have that decision in front of me, but I had access to 598, but, okay, well, please keep us posted. Anything else? Okay.
When was our last meeting?
May 13th.
I move that we approve the May 13th minutes. As written.
Sorry. Yeah, I already signed it.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all voting members, Chip?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Mike? Dave? Okay, those are approved unanimously.
Somebody's dog, hi.
Yep, somebody. All right, so Gail, do we have anything on our schedule for June 24th?
We do, I mailed it out to you.
The new one, okay.
The new one, there's one new one, and that's it for now, anyway.
Okay, no big ones, even though we think a couple are coming, but.
Yeah, they're coming, I think.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll see everyone back here on the 24th, so if there's no other business.
June 24th.
Yes. Put it in your calendar. You'll get.
One meeting in July.
I guess I would ask, Gail, is there any talk about? If we would ever, when the board would come back and start to meet even socially distanced in person?
None, none, no talk of it. We're only going to be opening up to the public starting Monday on a part-time basis with appointment only, so I foresee this for a while. Even, even meetings, all meetings are Zoom, even if it's like with an attorney and Jack is driving Jack crazy, of course. He wants to go sit in the conference room and sit six feet apart, but that's not even being allowed, you know, but, so, I don't see this ending soon.
Gail, have you heard any conversations about, you know, people that have been reappointed and swearing in, are we supposed to make an appointment to do that?
I believe you should call Betsy.
Okay.
And make an appointment with her, and I'm not quite sure how she's doing it, she may meet you outside and do it just outside. You know, swear you in outside.
Dave, have you done yours yet? Dave?
No, it shut down, and I wasn't sure if that was.
But they're there, you can call the office. And you can make arrangements with Betsy or one of the girls. Swear you in, it just, actually, starting Monday, we are open, so you can even call to make the appointment to go in. Yeah.
Will do.
Okay.
Any other business, board members?
I move that we adjourn.
Any discussion? Everyone raise your hand, everyone agree to adjourn? All right, thank you, everyone.
You guys.
End the recording and have a good night, and we'll see you soon.